Actually, on the minutes from July 11th, the motion is to close the salary board and open the commissioners meeting. And it says it's unanimous. I can't vote on that. I have to abstain. And I didn't vote on it, and I never vote on it, because it's a continuous motion. And I had no right to open the commissioners meeting. So just a point of order there.
Make that correction.
Thank you.
Make that correction in the minutes. Motion should be corrected. Any other corrections in the minutes? My Commissioner Jean Greco said my Commissioner Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close and be secured.
I'll make a motion to approve item number five that's listed on your agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the part-time custard in his opposite position in Suscano County. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to eliminate one second deputy clerk of courts position and create one second deputy pro bono position. Questions or comments?
Is that she? She gets your part of the salary board.
I'll make a motion to remove this from the salary board agenda. And I'll stay the way I am.
Well, we have a motion on the floor now, so we have to act on the current motion. This motion either gets voted up, voted down. Any other questions or comments?
I don't understand why if the pro bono attorney and clerk of courts doesn't want to forward on this, why it's even on here. I would never presume to know what goes on in another elected official's office.
Didn't someone say you wanted this eliminated?
I wanted to do something very simple, since I manage my offices, and just keep it in the same pot and just transfer it over to the other side. But I'll leave Wallenough alone, because it became a big problem. So I'll leave it the way it is, and we'll make do. So I'm very content.
If you have it the other side, it sounds to me like you don't need the person on the other side. You need the person on the other side, right?
It says in the job description that they will assist the pro bono attorney with any duties needed and help any employee with heavy workload. We'll leave it like that.
Wasn't that a problem for you previously?
No. It seemed to become a problem.
I thought we were doing this to fix a problem.
Well, where is this? What's number seven on the list?
Clerk typist, but that's different from the deputy clerk of courts. Is that correct?
I have an existing person in that position who's been there for a year and a half, and it's a union position. Why is this on the board?
My understanding was the question came up as if you're creating another full-time position in that area, you still need the part-time position.
Yes. The person still has that workload there. It hasn't just left or changed.
But you created a new full-time position to go into that area.
No, I have not.
Well, that's what your original request was, my understanding.
Yeah, that's what I thought as well. I thought we were, she wanted to eliminate one. Am I correct? Which is what number six is.
Here's my workload. Here's what my people do.
We know what they do, but we were doing this upon your, well, we did it at her request.
But then she requested, then she requested to have it removed from the agenda.
And then I was understanding that we're throwing a part-time position of an existing employee that I have out there to eliminate that person's position. That's not what I asked for, and it's unnecessary. So I'll stay the way I am and make do.
So the person that you're going to keep over on the other side, what are they going to be doing?
The job that was there by the previous person. And within the job description, it stated that they will assist the pro bono attorney's office as needed, and they will help other employees within their offices with heavy workloads.
I'm just a little confused. I mean, at one point you put-
Well, you seem to see me. I was trying to break you to the ground, so I can talk to you guys, and I haven't been able to do that.
Okay, I'll show you respect and let you talk. Let me finish talking before you interrupt me. The information that we received was that you wanted to eliminate that position, that you needed, did not need a full-time position in that side, and you needed a full-time position in the other side. That's the information that we received. That's the information that I was under the understanding.
I wasn't eliminating. I was just moving over. There was no elimination.
Well, you've got two sides. You eliminate the position on this side, you put the position on that side. That tells me that you didn't need the person on that side. You need the person on this side. Correct?
And we do that all day long, is assist one another with answering phones and helping out, and we're short-handed. Is one side helps the other.
So is the issue six, or is the issue really seven?
I don't have an issue with either one. I want to leave seven. That person was never even brought up in a subject. That person has a job with me in their union position for a year and a half. They have a workload to do. They do 25,000 images in 2010, plus the docking of 288 cases on average. And that's a three-day job. And I do a full-time position, and that person's workload never stopped. It still exists out there, and I'm short a body. I just want to continue with the body that vacated and rehired and fill that position.
Okay, but the confusion comes in is you put in a request changing it from the one position. Now, you didn't need that person in that position. You needed the person in the other position, which means you would gain a whole person in that other side.
Then why do you want to eliminate a person that did three days' work?
Well, if you're gaining a whole person on that side to do work on that side, you're getting five, you're getting five more days' work out of that person.
No, I've lost three days. Because now you're eliminating a body that did a whole department.
No, you, your request was to eliminate it from the one side. That's my point. You said that you didn't have the workload there. You want to eliminate it from this side and move it to that side.
That person that did that position did civil and criminal work. They sat down by me. They moved down the other end. They still had civil work to do. So more than half of their job dues was civil work.
Okay, well, again, what you said and what you put forth to the chief clerk was you want to eliminate the position on that side and create the position on the other side.
I did not say eliminate. Chief clerk said that. I said to shift it over. I didn't like the word elimination, and I knew that was going to become a problem.
To move the body from one side to the other, either shift or eliminate, that, move it to that, I mean, it's the same, it's the same meaning.
No.
Any other questions? All in favor?
No.
Well, I didn't hear a second. Second?
Second by Mary Ann Warren.
That's why we had discussion.
Right.
Okay. I was reading. I was trying to understand what was going on. So you seconded my motion?
Yes, I do. Yes, I did.
Item number six?
Yes, I did.
Okay, now it's up for vote?
Yep.
That's where we are, Michael.
Treasurer Badick said no, and Chief Pro bono attorney said no.
I say aye.
Yes, and Mary Ann Warren, yes. All vote yes. Item seven.
I think this is a horrible thing. I think this is a horrible, ridiculous thing.
You're all in favor.
I don't care.
Well, I do. Your personal, your personal feeling-
This is a horrible thing for you people to do, to take on another elected official and assume you know better than she does what she wants. This was, yeah, fine.
You had your opportunity for comment. You had your-
Well, there, there's more comment for you.
Item seven.
This is the way the whole thing is going. This is the worst administration ever. Okay, now shut up.
Only because you can't get your way all the time.
That's right. Because my way is the right way.
Well, there you go. Item seven. Is there a motion?
Well, the motion would be to discuss it. What's seven got to do in light of six? We did six because that's what we were originally requested to do. Is that correct, Sylvia?
Right.
The request came to you to do what we did in seven.
Yes.
Now, this morning, that seems to have changed regarding six. So I don't know how that resolves into seven.
Okay, is there a motion for seven?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to discuss it. Or is the discussion moot in light of six?
I'll second it. That's what we need. We need to discuss it.
Was there a motion?
Yes, motion by Michael to discuss, second by Mary Ann Warren to discuss. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. What are we doing with a part-time position? Was a request made for that, Sylvia? So that's up in the ears to what we're going to do with, with seven.
Was there nays on six? Or on seven, I mean, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear.
What do you want to do with seven?
I want to leave it as is. The young lady has a workload to do for three days a week. She has 288 cases on average to make, or to scan and to dock it, and she images them. And on 2010, they did over 25,000 images. And then they still have workload behind the scene to do is to box up files, move things around, space things out, file in the gym, and they assist with passports on the civil side.
I know she does a lot of work. Does she work on both sides?
No, she just helps out with the civil, because two girls can't handle it when a body's out. It's hard to take the workload. Because we do four, 500 passports a year, and they take time to do.
So we just did one from the deputy clerk of court, was eliminated, and now there's one on the pro bono side.
You created one on the pro bono side.
So now it's three and three. Is that correct?
Full-time. Three and three, full-time. Correct.
Do we have somebody going on on medical too?
Possibly. And vacations and sick time and everything.
Well, then I say we don't do anything with a clerk typist for now. Is that right? Because you need her.
For good, yes.
But she's still part-time clerk typist.
Yes. She has 999 hours per year.
Okay, we discussed it.
Any other questions? Okay, go on, Diana. Me.
May I ask one question for confirmation? You eliminated the deputy clerk of court's position, and you created a pro bono position? And left Wallenough alone with my domestic relations, young lady.
I don't know who she is. That's on which side?
The one in the middle. So we're all set.
All of you there was item six.
Thank you very much.
Item eight.
Motion to approve item number eight.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren. She has set the signing salary emergency management coordinator to 40,000 per year and increased to 45,000 upon successful condition of six months probationary period. We note 2012 yearly increase. And this is a minimum 40-hour-per-week position with benefits for the county personnel only. Questions or comments? All in favor?
This is, this is to replace Charlene Moser?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Public comment on the salary board? Yes.
I have a question, not a comment. Is any of the discussion by the commissioners going to appear in the minutes?
Item nine.
Motion to close salary board and open the commissioners meeting.
All in favor? One second.
Motion to approve item number three that's listed on the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item three, amend through the minutes from the July 11th, 2012 meeting to change the appointment of the Southern Cruel Demic to township, to the Suscano County Conservation District Board as a farmer director for the unexpired term of January 11th, 2012 through December 31st, 2013, the original as stated 2012. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item four.
I'll make a motion to approve item number four that's listed on your agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the minutes from the July 25th, 2012 meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve.
We have item five.
No one else here.
We have, please come second. No one's here. We do have a couple of recommissions. Our Donato 911 has 25 years of service. And we also have Thomas Yowalski, Veterans Affairs. And Tom has five years of service. Congratulations to both of them. And thank you for your service.
Motion to approve item number six that's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, item six to approve the cash disbursements and EFTPS payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item seven.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the following seminar request and their payments for seminar requests that's listed in item seven. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number eight that's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve the acceptance of the resignation of Nathan Hibbert Maintenance. Questions or comments?
Did he come back?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item nine.
I'll make a motion to approve item number nine that's listed on your agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to retire Robert Straub, the Suscananian, the open full-time, non-union position, emergency management coordinator effective September 1st, 2012, for the six months probation period. Questions or comments?
Is this a new position?
No, this is the EMA position. Yes, in the back.
What kind of background does he have? What certifications does he hold?
He's got, I have his resume in front of me. He's got a career with the state police. He's got probably over 20 years of experience in upper-level management training, establishing training across the state. He's got several certifications already that fit into the category and was the best qualified candidate that we interviewed.
How many candidates did you interview?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number 10 that's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to adopt the resolution 2012, resolution to appoint Reliance Trust Company Atlanta, Georgia to act as trustee with respect to the Suscanan County Employees Retirement Plan effective upon the termination of Marshall Isley Trust Company and to terminate Marshall Isley Trust Company in N.A. as trustee with respect to Suscanan County Employees Retirement Plan effective 10/2012. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 that's listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to adopt resolution 2012-14, naming Paul Johnson Emergency Management Training Officer as the applicant agent for DR 4030 Tropical Storm Lake. Questions or comments?
Yeah, what exactly does that mean?
He has to be the designated as the person so that he can sign off on all the stuff related to all the floods and stuff that's still going on, that we're still taking care of.
Okay, would that normally have been the EMA directors, some type of thing?
Yes, and that's actually the same thing with the rest of the names on. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry on. Item 12.
Motion to approve item number 12 that's listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item 12, resolution 2012-15, naming Paul Johnson Emergency Management Training Officer as the applicant agent for DR 4025, Burke and Ivey. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item, so carried. Item 13.
I'll make a motion to approve item 13 that's listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item 13, adopt the resolution 2012-16, resolution naming Paul Johnson Emergency Management Training Officer as the applicant agent for DR 1898, hazard mitigation grant program. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item 14.
Motion to approve item number 14 that's listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item 14, resolution 2012-17, resolution naming Paul Johnson Emergency Management Training Officer as the applicant agent for DR 4030 for the hazard mitigation buyout. Questions or comments?
Could you explain what a DR 4030 HMGP buyout is?
There is during, because of the flood that occurred, there were several homes in Suscanan County that were approved by Fremer for the buy-out program because of the substantial damage that was incurred to them. Once they go through the process, we have to coordinate as far as getting quotes for the, or assisting the homeowners with the paperwork to comply, as well as working with the contractors and the local agencies as far as the demolition removal and the restoration of the property. In addition, they have to take and, you know, make sure that we try to operate within the grant that we were, as far as the funding that was budgeted, to try and stay within those guidelines.
One more question. Is Mr. Johnson doing this as part of his normal activities, or is he being paid extra for these?
It's part of his normal activities.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go on, or I'm sorry, all in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve item number 15 that's listed on the agenda. But could we add Greensburg, Pennsylvania? Could we add Pennsylvania to it? It is Pennsylvania. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
Could we add Pennsylvania to that, please?
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to accept proposal for the Elevator Services and Technology, Evaluator Services and Technology Incorporated of Greensburg, PA for the data extraction and related services for $9,800 all-inclusive for the assistance, the conversion of the new software and assessment. Questions or comments? Yes.
Will the new software package, will that, what kind of changes will that bring about in assessment? Will, you know, will there be more things available or an easier, an easier navigable system?
Yes, this can be much easier to navigate.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number 16 that's listed on the agenda.
At 9:24. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to recess the commissioners meeting at 9:24 to hold a public hearing regarding proposed amendments to the county subdivision land development ordinance 2005-01 as amended in January 26, 2011. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and at this time, according to the planning commission from their meeting on July 31st and a letter dated August 2nd, the planning commission requests that the commissioners take no action to amend the Susquehanna County subdivision land development ordinance due to the pending court case of parts of Act 13. The parts that were causing the requirements to change the ordinance are, at this time, no longer in effect.
Any other comment? I'm sorry. Yes, all.
Do you have any comments on the meeting you had with Penn State official?
We'll get to that when we get back to the commissioners meeting. This is, this hasn't to do with the public hearing for Act 13. When we get back to the commissioners meeting, then I'll answer that one.
Now, when is the public hearing? Is it for Act? Is right now, this is what you're calling a public hearing?
Yeah.
For Act 13?
Yeah.
For changes to the subdivision ordinance.
Just for that particular issue?
Yeah. Any motion to close the hearing?
Second. Motion to close the, you made the motion.
No, I'm asking for a motion.
You got it.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion to close the public hearing, second by Commissioner Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now at 9:26. We'll now return to the commissioners meeting, and we will take and go to public comment. And Elton had the first question, and that was about the Penn State. Do you want, as Penn State coordinator, do you want to respond to that?
I think the talks went very well. We asked Penn State to come back to us with a proposal, and I think it's in our boxes right now. And I just saw it this morning, just before the meeting. I haven't opened it yet, so.
One thing we did ask Penn State for, because Suscanan County has not had a 4-H coordinator for how many months?
Over a year.
Over a year. We pretty much laid it down to Penn State that, you know, why have you let Suscanan County go without a 4-H coordinator? Whenever other county has a paid 4-H coordinator and educator, most of them have master's degrees, and Suscanan County doesn't have one at all. They agree that that was kind of a slip-up and that they're going to work with us on trying to get a full-time 4-H coordinator here. Correct?
They had proposed a program assistance, and we want an educator, is what we only expressed.
Right. The same that every other county has. Any other public comment?
That's the way it ought to be.
I agree. You're right. Our kids are just as worthy as all the other kids in the state.
We better read.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, I have comments. We all have comments.
Okay, who's got a comment?
I'd like to know, since Act 13 is in the courts, is it in effect in our county at this point?
Yes. The answer is yes.
And what parts are in effect?
The rest that are not in litigation.
So what would that be? Can you enumerate?
Local zoning is what the courts rule on.
So then the other parts, as far as, what would you call, the impact fees?
They're, they're going forward.
They're going forward? So when will you actually see an impact fee? When will a county see an impact fee? Do you know anything about that?
We'll pull the rip link toward the end of the year. That remains to be seen.
Figure C is still working on the whole process, the distribution process, as well as the mechanisms for getting the collection and the distribution.
Now, up to this point, what kind of money from the gas company has been coming down to our county before this impact fee got started, before Act 13? What monies did come to us? I mean, do the gas companies pay anything? Did they pay anything the past four years to the state?
Then you'd have to ask the state. I don't know what they paid to the state.
So then, did you get any trickle-down from the state? From any of that? Any of the corporate taxes or anything else?
I can't tell you what they paid, so I can't tell you if anything trickled down.
So you don't know of any monies that have trickled down because the gas industry is in our county for four years?
I, no. What I said was I don't know what they paid in corporate taxes in the state of Pennsylvania, so I don't know what trickled down or trickled down to. You'd have to check with the state agencies.
So did, so if it's not corporate taxes, what, any kind of taxes or any kind of fees, has anything trickled down to our county on the county level from the gas industry the past four years?
As far as taxes or-
Or anything? Taxes, fees?
Sure. I mean, you've got to look around. There's a lot more jobs. There's a lot more people working. People that are working are paying taxes now on income that they're, they're working at. You've got searchers that have paid for doing searches. You've got people that have come in from the gas companies and use the other services in the offices over in the pro bonotaries and over in the other agencies that have paid money.
So this is all income taxes? So we're only getting, what, portions of income taxes coming down to the county?
No, that's not what I said.
So what did you say? I'm asking about actual monies that the county can use. What are you getting from the gas industry four years in this county? What actual monies to your budget that would help your budget?
Help our budget?
Yeah.
Well, there is one that comes in through searches and things like that that they do. I mean, I don't know all of them off the top of my head. I'd have to research it.
Well, do you know of any? So you know maybe searches that they do in the courthouse? They pay a fee, and then some of that fee goes to you, to the county?
Well, they pay for all the copies that they get.
For copying on the copy machines and for doing searches? So that's all the money you're getting directly?
No, listen, don't try to trick me into a word play here. I told you I didn't know of all the stuff that's coming in. I'd have to research it. Anybody else have a question? Yes.
We got this handed up the last meeting.
We got this handout the last meeting, Suscore Alert, PA, and my question is, is this what is being funded by Resolution 212-09? The $1.50 that's being given to our telephone carriers?
That, that there?
Yeah.
Can you show me?
This, this.
No, no. The $1.50 goes to 911. 911, all that 911 goes to Harrisburg and gets distributed back. And now that you brought that up, 911 actually is in a huge deficit in the state of Pennsylvania. They pay out the money for what it costs to run a 911 program, but they're already using, they will, at the end of this year, will use half of next year's money to fund the 911 programs in the state of Pennsylvania. There's, if you go on to Pima's website, they've done a white paper on it as to the problems that they've got. They figure in two years, it'll be pretty much, there'll be no funding for the 911 because they have already used the previous, the following year's money in the previous year. So, you know, there's some issues there that you're trying to work on. Plus, most of the technology in the 911 centers, a lot of it, within five to 10 years is going to be so outdated, it won't be supported. So there's some huge issues with 911 right now.
Okay, so, because the, the other question that I have is, if you don't have text messaging, if you don't have a mobile phone, if you don't have a cellphone, this service is absolutely useless. Unless the notification given to a, a landline, this service is of no use.
Right. This is a supplementary, supplementary service. This service is on top of what all the local municipalities and townships know.
So that if you, if you are signed up for this alert, then you have a good chance of being coming informed as to something going on in your community. But if you don't have the services that are listed here, if you don't have cellphone service or whatever else is listed, smartphone, you're out of luck.
No, not necessarily, because most of what I'm getting over at the alert messages is the same messages I get on the TV or on the radio when they turn off the radio and TV for an emergency. So like the storms that came through last week, or two weeks ago, whatever it was, I got the same messages across my, my phone from the service that I had on my radio and I had on my TV at the house. Any other questions?
I have several, so I hope you'll indulge me. Very simple, but why is the flag a half-masted?
The flags are half-masted because the president ordered it due to the shooting in Wisconsin.
Okay. There was an incident, not an incident, an occurrence at the last regular meeting, not the pension board meeting, where a citizen asked a question and gave backup, back to a backup about violations by WPX, the gas company, and specifically mentioned well casing spills in two townships. And that these, this company had been under investigation for two years. And the question that, that this citizen asked is, why are you allowing them to drill with active violations against them? And what are you going to do to protect the citizens? And the question was never answered. It was directed to the chair, and it was never answered. But Commissioner Jean Greco said, I don't think we have any comment about that. But WPX, WPX there, in the interest of fairness, let them respond. My first question is, why didn't the chair or someone of the, one of the commissioners respond to that question since it's a directive to the commissioners?
Well, I, you know, I'll respond to you. I mean, we've responded to this question at every meeting since I've been here, and the question is, is about the gas drilling in Suscano County. And the answer is, again, is that the county doesn't have the authority. It's the state agencies and federal agencies that have the authority. DEP is on site. Those federal agencies are on site. Those individuals are doing their job. They finished up Down and Demick. They're in Franklin Forks now. Those agencies are the ones that are responsible, and they're doing their job.
My follow-up question, which regardless of what you say is, why is, was the meeting turned over? Why was your role as leaders of the commission, as the commissioners and leaders, why was your role abrogated and turned over to a member of the public who just happened to be there representing the gas industry? I don't understand why the commissioner said, well, we can't, or we won't, excuse me, we won't answer that one. We have no comment. But someone else in the back can answer it. I don't think that's your role. And at the last meeting, you had no comment, no comment, no comment. So my further question, why not? First question is, why was this meeting turned over to a representative from the gas industry instead of the commissioners answering it? And second, why don't you have comments? That's what, that's what we sent you here for. No comment?
No comment.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to adjourn?
Right, and I'd also like to say that even though you don't have the authority, which you repeat quite often, to do anything, and you feel as the DEP and the EPA, you also, as a citizen and a fellow resident of this county, have the interest and the caring to just make a statement or to say something in regard to what's happening to some of our areas. That you could make a statement, that you can advocate for it, support it, do something, advocate for the people, even though you may not have authority. You can advocate. So why don't you do that?
No comment. Any other questions? Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You adjourn.